I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Mikhalechik.
Here.
Council President Cunningham.
Here.
Councilman Carnes.
Present.
Councilman De Senza.
Present.
Councilman De Sino.
Here.
Councilman Doty.
Here.
Councilman Griggs.
Here.
Attorney Chrisini.
Here.
Okay, we have a pillar tonight, and well deserved, and it was interesting when I was reading through all the stuff. I started at my current job in August of eighty-seven, the same time that you started. Thirty-eight years is an awful long time, and I'm sure you've seen a lot of things come and go, and, you know, that's the purpose of the pillars, you know, is to recognize people that are behind the scenes, just getting it done year after year after year. I'm always happy when you see, you know, one of the fire department make it because there's a lot of guys there, and they put out constantly and all the time. And, you know, over time, I'm sure we're gonna work our way around to all the deserving guys, but guess what? Your turn today.
Whereas the governing body of the borough of Middlesex recognizes that in order for a community to thrive and succeed, they must rely on the service and support of its residents, whereas the wisdom, history, commitment, and passion that so many of our residents exhibit and extend to their neighbors and the borough make them the pillars of our community, and whereas it is in the spirit that Mayor Mikhalechik would like to honor and recognize individuals throughout the community who have made exceptional contributions to the borough of Middlesex, and whereas William Winkelman has consistently demonstrated praiseworthy service and unprecedented commitment to the borough and its residents by being an irreplaceable asset to the fire department and the community as a whole. Whereas William Winkelman has served as a member of the Middlesex Fire Department since August of nineteen eighty-seven, when he joined the Pierce Fire Company Number Three Fire Station, and whereas William Winkelman has volunteered in the borough as an active firefighter for over thirty-eight years and has dedicated numerous hours helping and protecting the community with unwavering courage, leadership, and sacrifice. And whereas William Winkelman has served in various capacities while working in the fire department, holding the position of engineer in nineteen eighty-nine, lieutenant in nineteen ninety, captain in nineteen ninety-one, and ninety-two, vice president of the Pierce Fire Company Number Three in two thousand, and since two thousand and one until present, he has served as president of the Pierce Fire Company Number Three. Currently, he holds the title of lieutenant of Pierce Fire Company Number Three since his appointment in twenty twenty-four. With every position, he has demonstrated exceptional leadership bravery and has made a significant impact on the borough and its residents. Whereas William Winkelman has devoted his life to ensuring the safety of others through volunteer service, which is the backbone of the community, ensuring the future of Middlesex, therefore allowing the borough to thrive and succeed. Now, therefore, Jack Mikhalechik, mayor of the borough of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, along with the Middlesex Borough Council, and on behalf of the residents of Middlesex, we wish to thank you, Wink, William Winkelman, for all of your dedication, sacrifice, and labor to our community. Affix this day, the twenty-fifth of November. Congratulations.
We got one for speeches, but I'd like to thank the mayor and council for the award, all the members of the Middlesex Fire Department, especially my family, that gives so much too, and someone that got me involved, Jack Costa. So I'd like to thank everybody for coming up and supporting me, and I hope for more years to come.
Family, like to come up and get a picture, and also after that, let's get a picture of all the firemen up here with, like, so this might take a couple minutes, but we've got plenty to talk about.
Get these. Firemen, stand up. You should give her a cookie. Joe, you can get them cookies. What are you hiding over there?
I figure there's enough people that don't need any.
Kenny, scoot down, Kenny. There you go. Bring everybody down.
Don't give them to me, I don't want them.
Wink, run center.
Hey, guys, make sure you get in there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, guys, I know you're all taking off. Thanks for coming, we do appreciate it, and also have a happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully you guys have no falls this weekend, that's what we wanted to do today, you know? Hopefully, let's open the path.
I thought I saw some good results.
As always.
How much up to the program, halfway through?
I'd like to know.
Different.
The blue?
I hope you get more out of it than I got out of it.
It's got like a whole blue in my eyes.
Huh?
I want the blue, understand, you see it?
Yeah, I feel like I said it to people though.
All right, everybody here was...
I mean, maybe I'm wrong.
Kevin?
I don't know.
I understand.
All right, just wait in a second for Mr. Kevin to come back.
The business, the business aspect. You, you got a good feeling.
Do you think, see if you can get a... There he is. All right. You gotta do the right thing, I get it. Okay, moving on, we have no appointments, no proclamations, we have ordinance for public hearing and final adoption.
Ordinance twenty-one fifty-eight twenty-five and ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty-one forty-four twenty-five and amending chapters four twenty-seven, four twenty-six, four twenty-fifty-seven, and four twenty-fifty-nine of the Borough Land Use Ordinance of the Municipal Code of the Borough of Middlesex to define contractor storage yard and to include contractor storage yard as permitted conditional use in the IND Industrial District and the High Heavy Industrial District, and amend the conditions required for contractor storage yard as a conditional use.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to, for to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone wishing to step up? Okay, I'd like a motion to close.
Motion.
The public hearing.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go with a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
All right.
Question?
Go ahead.
Number four. On page nine. When this resolution was first brought up, we discussed eliminating the one contractor per yard.
Hang on.
And everybody said yes, and it's still in there.
Hang on, let me get to the right page here.
Page nine.
Yeah, number four.
Number four. We were gonna change that to allow...
Subway.
Them to have more than one contractor in the yard. If you look on Lincoln Boulevard, where you have that big parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
There's multiple contractors in there. Look on Mountain Avenue, where you have multiple, you have multiple contractors.
Yeah, Joe's right.
Hang on. It's an actual order, so we might not be able to amend, we might have to table and then come back. So what do we do at this point? Do we table it, or do we approve it and then amend it right away?
That's a few. Yeah, I mean, I would say that you could approve it and just amend it. Yeah, we've done that before. I would say that we wouldn't enforce the offensive defending provision.
We do that at the next meeting.
Oh, so you get to the next meeting, because, unless you do a special meeting, because you're, the year is up, but just, I wouldn't, I would not enforce that.
January, Joe.
I'd like to have it right on.
The second meeting.
Yeah, I would just, you know, I mean, the substantive parts of the ordinance, I think you could proceed with, besides that clause, right?
I don't have any problem with any of it, but that, no, we had discussed that.
It's a good catch, it's fair.
We did discuss it.
Yeah, we discussed it.
I would just put it through, so we'll just let our people know.
So we're gonna approve it and amend it?
We'll introduce it for amendment.
Yeah, you could do it for your first meeting in January, and just don't enforce that.
Okay.
You have the ability to, for a short period of time, to hold.
Okay.
Not continue.
All right, any other discussion on this item? Nothing? Call the roll, please.
Council President Cunningham.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman De Senza.
Yes.
Councilman De Sino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Okay. Kind of missed one right at the, at the beginning of the meeting, because we did have the pillar. We're just gonna stop here for one, one minute, because I would like to have a moment of silence for actually Jimmy Matula. Thank you. I know of nothing worse for, for a parent than that. Okay, so we are up to the mayor, oh, approval of minutes, please.
Approval of the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five regular and executive meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's go to the mayor's report. Okay, a few things are going on. One of the things on the lighter side is if anyone had a chance to go by Victor Crowell Park, the Christmas decorations are up, they're lit, they look dynamite. I know the DPW's been busy moving them around, finishing up, because you do have them in front of the park and stuff like that, so that'll be coming somewhere down the road. I did get a chance to go to the League of Municipalities, I managed to sneak out of work, and I got down there for the day. It was actually pretty encouraging. I'm sorry, Claire, I was a day late, I couldn't get down there. I thought, I saw the pictures, I think it's absolutely awesome, the recognition that you guys got from that as Rookie of the Year, couldn't be more pleased. I did actually meet several of our, several of our vendors. I also met the Hoffman Corporation, which are the, these are the guys that bought the Ferris Brothers building, they're gonna do a good job over there, they're, they're very nice, they wanna do the right thing for our town, that's always, that's always a plus. During, during a period, we did have actually a, I would like to call it a budget meeting, but it really wasn't a budget meeting, it was basically, I met with the administrators, the CFO, the council president, and myself, and we basically set out our stall of, here's, here's the budget process, here's how we go through it, and we just wanna make sure we didn't miss any of the bases, and this way everyone can be involved as it goes along. As, as you guys all know, I'm a big one on the budget, because that's what drives our whole year, so as the process is going through, we expect to be very communicative, so we can, we can just get that out there, that everyone knows what's, what's going on. One of the other things is I did have an opportunity to go down to the Senior Center for the recreation and the police, they actually had that craft fair that they had, that was really well attended, it was a lot of fun that, that the people were there. Some of those projects, I have to say, they're probably gonna be about five years before they actually get them done, but that's okay. It, it, it turned out, it was, it was very well attended, and it was, it was really well done. I mean, I gotta hand it to the, to the ladies, they know how to, they know how to run an event, they did a tremendous job. Don't forget, next week, we have the town hall, that's, there's gonna be no action taken, just so everyone's clear, there's no action taken at that meeting, this is a chance, it's gonna be a SWAT analysis, similar to what we did last year, it's gonna be a chance for everyone to speak up, talk about what we like, what we don't like, and then, you know, obviously, we have to bring it back, and it's things that we'll, we'll think about and talk about, but we also know that what we wanna do is, you know, we gotta work within our budget constraints, which, as Carolyn well knows, I'm big on making sure that we, we stay within our budget lines there, for sure. You know, one of the other things, being that we, this is a meeting that's a little bit late in, in the month of November, we don't have an earlier meeting, I would like to just say thank you to all the veterans that are out there, it's something that, it's easy to get glossed by and just have it disappear on us, but for all of you, you veterans that are out there, and I know of at least one up here, two, I know two up here, thank you for your service. All right, one last item I have on here, and we do have a lot of good things happening, you're gonna hear a bunch out of the guys here, and, and the guys on the, on the council, we're getting a lot done, and we're, and I couldn't be more pleased about that. But one of the things that, that sticks out today is that if you look at, when we get down to the ordinance regarding the transfers, you're gonna see a significant transfer to health coverage, and I have to say, if there's any one single item that's driven by the state, that's gonna make it very difficult for us to maintain the type of budget that we had last year, it's gonna be health coverage. Thirty-six percent increase, they're out of their minds, that we have to suck up and find a way to do that. I mean, it's getting to the point where it's untenable, you know, you know, everyone sort of glosses over it, now all of a sudden, you know, some of the, some of the higher-ups in the state, oh, this is a big problem. It's been a big problem. They, instead of talking about it until, and holding it off as a real issue until after the election, they should have done it all along, instead of just hanging this, hanging all these municipalities out to dry. I mean, the transfer, and I don't have it in front of me, I do, but I, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, think about that, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, we got a transfer just to make up for the shortfall that, that, that the health coverage is gonna, is gonna prevent, is being pushed our way. And that's despite the fact, it's going up thirty-six percent despite the fact that we had everybody go to the difference card and everything else, it's almost gonna push us into trying to look at it again, which we're probably gonna have to do, but, I mean, it's just, it's unfortunate, and everyone should be calling Trenton and making a big stink about it, because it is a big stink, and, you know, it's okay for them to talk about it, but it's us that have to pay for it, you know, and I'm not talking about the council, I'm talking about the residents, and that's, that's all I have to, that's my little tirade on that. That's my report for today. Council President.
Thanks, Mayor. I know Wink left, but I wanted to congratulate Bill Winkelman, our next pillar, his dedication to responding to almost all fire calls, I think some of us know that, some don't, is a true testament to who Wink is, and he exemplifies all of our volunteer firefighters, I know most of that, but I wanted to thank him again. I wanted to extend on behalf of the mayor and council, our deepest condolences and sympathies to the family of Middlesex High School senior, James Matula. The community is devastated by his loss, especially many, many of our current Blue Jays, as well as many of our recent graduates from high school, including both my kids. Middlesex Borough needs to support the Matula family, and we will, with whatever they need. Our twenty twenty-six reorganization meeting, the mayor did confirm that it will be Tuesday, January the sixth, at seven P.M. Congratulations to both Shannon Quinn and Jennifer Clock, who won council seats back on November the fourth. I look forward to working with both of the council women. Congratulations to our environmental commission, led by Chairwoman Clara LeVorn, sorry I missed that, Claire, down in Atlantic City, but for being honored, as the mayor said, the twenty twenty-five Sustainable Jersey Rookie of the Year, which you were showcased last week, so thank you again. Thank you, Mayor, for organizing another town hall, back-to-back years, that's scheduled for December third, it's literally next week, from seven to nine P.M. here. I also wanted to thank Councilman Carnes for reinvigorating and refocusing the film commission into what it is now. Your hard work has definitely paid off, job well done, you stuck with it, changed it a bunch of times, and I think it's in a good spot now, so thank you. And lastly, the Friends of Middlesex is hosting another event, another program, a guitar concert with Vic Leonard, that'll be this Sunday at three P.M. in the community room. Happy Thanksgiving and all, and that's it.
Okay, Councilman Carnes.
Yes, thank you again, like the council president said, I'll jump off with the film, we went down to the AC. Thank you for everyone for your support, your constant and creative support when it comes to seeing the ability of what the film industry is bringing to New Jersey. It's a constant boom. I went down with the civilian part of the commission, which is Mr. Jonathan Beal and Mr. Joseph Tomas, and we drove down, we saw a few people there, quickly, briefly, we're like grabbing free American bags, like, see you later, alligators, because our classes all started at the same time, but I was very happy to see Middlesex represented very well by our, by who we are in a lot of places, and the accomplishments of the environmental commission is tremendous, and I would have gladly celebrated with all you've done. We're working on other things as well, and we're spread out and doing good. So the film commission is, is bringing millions of dollars, Jersey is starting to rival Illinois and Georgia in competition for ratable opportunities for our local economy to boost itself. It has taken a lot of conversation beyond what we see here, and a lot of conversation, well, with the help of the council president and the mayor as well, figuring out how to handle this. I believe the hell the, for the, we met with the New Jersey Film Ready Commission, which is involved with people who are all across our community, different mayor, they have their own commission, so they led this, they led this class, we are there, we are on the brink of a straightaway of somebody calling up saying, hey, we need to get this done, we're gonna come film here, and then it brings, you can put your personal home, there's gonna be a, once we're up and running, there'll be submission forms to where you, if you're interested in renting your home out, your address, everything's private and personal, you don't, you don't have to worry, nobody, just take pictures of your house, and they'll submit it in the catalog. So what we're building and using their platform is a catalog of Middlesex, so restaurants, parks, angles, anything and everything that you think makes Middlesex unique can be put into this catalog, so anybody across the world who's filming, and they say Victor Crowell Park, or they say Mountain View High School, or whatever it is, they have pictures of it, that is now in the catalog for anybody to get, to, if they wanna come in and film. We have, I think, pretty open communication with that, and it's exciting. I'm very excited over it, because it'd be pretty awesome if they filmed ET three here, I will gladly stand in the background and pretend to be along there. There is another big shout-out. I received two phone calls, I wanna make sure that we know this, Ms. for the seniors department, Melissa has received two phone calls to me, complimenting her leadership with the seniors and everything they do for them and staff. I think I made you, the administrators, aware of one, but there's definitely two, and it was well said. Arts and, oh wait, let me read her thing. She said, here are some talking points for the senior report, Medicare, open enrollments ends on December seventh, any last-minute questions, please call the senior center discussing an appointment. Nets, vets breakfast will be held, with the veterans, for us, for us veterans, will be held on December eleventh at the American Legion, one-time location change. We will be hosting a loneliness around the holidays present, oh, we will be hosting a loneliness around the holidays presentation by the sixty-plus Department of Mental Health, Raritan Bay YMCA twelve-five. Go love on people, everybody, at one P.M. Arts and culture switching, thank you, Hardick, for, and the other rest of the crew for working, like, they're consistently working and getting everything done, and I know that there are some great plans for twenty twenty-six. For the Board of Education as the liaison, I can say that communication from this side is still, hasn't changed, it is what it is, and I'm hoping next year, we will have better communication with the Board of Education. Somehow, I think that will happen to the best of the ability, but I don't know how, but I will, I will do the best to make sure that that bridge state remains open, and most of our taxpayers understand what the hell's going on with their tax dollars from every angle that they can. Side note, I ran into the Montana people, as I told the mayor and council president, I know that they mentioned a few, there's headaches, so if you have headaches, please reach out to these administrators involving Montana, like, if there, if there's holes that aren't filled in, if you're curious about what's happening with your pipes, if any of that mumbo jumbo's going on, sorry, Bobby to jump in, but I just saw them today and I talked to them, and so springtime is what I was, what I was told, but good luck dealing with that, and that brings, so, springtime from Montana and all the way until then. Great. I'm done.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman De Senza.
Yes, I too attended the League of Municipalities with the rest of the council, and Claire, I'm sorry I couldn't make it, we, we were on a vacation, we didn't come home until late Tuesday night, otherwise I would have been. But in reference to the Hoffman company coming into town, interesting to find out that they live next door to Chief Benson, the Hoffman family, before you moved in. So they were, Middlesex family, coming back to Middlesex. They're located in Newark now, and this will be their headquarters, and we're very excited to have a nice ratable in town. Another point, just comes to mind, can we get Montana to remove the no parking signs that are all outdated? No, all over, on all the sides.
Stone Center Avenue, a bunch of them.
When they were doing, yeah, they were all over the place. Whoever. Now, I'm talking about the ones on most of the side streets that are part of the water thing, and they're, they're all, all the dates are outdated. Yeah, they're all expired. Yeah.
Yeah.
And some of them are on stakes on, at the curb line.
As far as the recreation department, over forty children and their parents came to the rec center on November seventh to see animals and from Eyes of the Wild, sponsored by Clean Communities. Yoga mini holiday session is starting tonight for the next four weeks, and the biggest event is Winter Wonderland is on December seventh, please, everybody mark it down. We have ten craft community business tables, six food trucks. We have any wood for the bonfire? Want any wood for the bonfire? Okay, and at two thirty to six thirty, please try to be there. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, Councilman De Sino.
Yes, I too was at the League of Municipalities, and I did attend a bunch, breakfast with Claire, administrator, and deputy administrator. Claire, administrator and deputy administrator. A little bit about the Sustainable Jersey Award, this is not like something that easily happens. So, first time bronze certificate, we had 245 points. And to be able to get points, you have to establish a mandatory green theme, which Claire has done. You have to implement two of 15 priority actions, which are not easy to do. She has to deal with the council sometimes, and sometimes her things won't go through. Also, she has to complete actions, six of 17 categories, and have a total of at least 150 points. Middlesex has 245, only a 105 points shy of the silver certificate, so she did a great job. You go around town everywhere, you see her everywhere. You see her on Raritan, you see her at her shop.
At Tree Farm.
You see her Sunday morning, and wherever you see her car at the library, she's always doing something, so she's a wonderful person, and we're lucky to have her. That's all I have to say about that. As far as public works, took them out to Mountain View Park. So, we're in the top lot now, they removed all the equipment and all the material in that area is ready for the playground there. They brought in 100 tons of stone, 40 tons of three-quarter clean stone, preparation of rubber service. As far as the playground area, the playgrounds are all there. Also, at the league, we've met with one of the contractors who's going to be doing the rubber, what do they call it, any rubber?
Rubber surface.
The rubber surface. We had hoped to get it done, but he said, don't rush it because it'll be a 20-year warranty, you'll, you'll lose the warranty, it'll take less than five years. We have to get through the wire without that rubber surface. It'll be much better. Playground was beautiful.
It, it does look nice. Now, stick a little sign on there and maybe give them a suggestion to go to the park at the back of Victor Crowe. Send them over there. You know, you know, what you're dealing with is the basic, do you want it fast or do you want it right? So, let's get it right.
Look, also, we talked about the decorations, holiday decorations that are installed on poles, control and the streetscape. Next week, they're going to be installing that panel tree, how tall is that, Lenny? 20 or something? 22 foot tree. If you ever go through Bonbrook Lake downtown by the train station, that big tree that's there, it's going to be silver as well. Mark to finish it up on leaf cleanup and winter preparations during. Right now, and reminder, cycle tent which closes 27, 28, 29. So, tomorrow's your day to get there, if you need to get there. If not, they're more open again until Tuesday next week.
Okay, I just want to add one thing real quick. You know, when we start talking about the Christmas decorations, and I know people sit there, well, you know, you're always trying to pour mouth, and it was user to lose money with the, with the streetscape grant. So, this is all, this was all done on someone else's dime. So, it was, it was a way for us to finish up using what funds that we had left over because, you know, just the way the streetscape worked out, and a couple of things changed, and we wound up with a little money left over and allowed us to do, you know, get some decorations, liven up the town a little bit. So, so what are you telling us now? With streetscape too, there's going to be a 50-foot tree? Nah, 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 just kidding. All right, well, thank you. Right. But thank, thank, that's all right. Thank, well, this is what we should be doing, we should be looking at ways to maximize our return for anything that we're getting, especially in grant money. Moving down the line, Mr. Dooty.
Lenny, Monday, right? They're being lit? You gonna start lighting this stuff?
Yeah, I mean, I started already.
Definitely by the end of the week, just wait if somebody asks. Okay. Who would have thought? Yeah. Second thing, I like the turkeys that are telling you to eat pizza. I noticed that today, I noticed that today. That was funny. Just like, you had to get something in there for Thanksgiving. It was great. Okay, I have all three of my reports to give you tonight. Let's start with the fire department. 50 calls to service in October. Luckily, no structure fires. That's a good thing. They had a cooking fire, mulch fire, five motor vehicle accidents with injuries, three with no injuries, five gas leaks. Naturally, this time of the year, everybody check your heaters, make sure everything's working properly, this is the time of the year. They, you can't stress it enough. You know, especially, people have been running them, but now they'll be really cranking, so just be careful with them. They had one unauthorized burning and two authorized controlled burnings. For the month, a couple highlights that the chief sent over was homeowner in Glengarry Road reported their microwave, that was the, the fire. They got there, they removed the power, and it managed to be out. On 19th, the police department was dispatched for a separate incident, and they were met with smoke at the front door. The fire department was dispatched, they went in, there was burnt food on a stove top, they secured the stove, ventilated the home, cleared the scene a few minutes later. On October 24th, police department requested MFD to the scene of Glengarry Road for an animal rescue. They found a deer stuck in a fence. They had to take the fence apart so that the deer could get out, and it survived, and it took off. Just, it was, that's got to be the most bizarre one I saw in this sheet this week, this month. October 30th, they responded to an overturned motor vehicle on the property of 245 Mountain Avenue. It struck, it struck a stop sign, bollered and overturned. The driver was, was able to exit, and with the help of the MFD was turned over to Bon Brook EMS, the vehicle's power was secured, all fire units were cleared from scene in just over an hour. The 30th, they responded to Raritan Avenue for an overturned motor vehicle due to striking a utility pole. When they got there, the pole was split in two and suspended in the air by wires. The occupants of the vehicles were able to free themselves prior to emergency services arriving. PSCNG arrived on the scene and took care of the wires and the poles. They attended the Fire Prevention Day at all Middlesex Borough schools on Tuesday, October 7th. They hosted a fire drill for the students and went over fire safety procedures if a fire were to happen at home or school. They attended their second live burn at the Somerville Borough Fire Training Tower on October 15th from 18:30 to 21:30 hours. Also, they will be supervising the bonfire on the Winter Wonderland, and the following weekend is Santa, I believe is what they have decided on. We'll be going around. Yeah, it's two weekends after that, it's the 20th, you're correct. So, make sure you're at home with your kids, if you have kids, and Santa will be around, and they'll be giving out candy canes to everybody. Okay, I have the court report. October 25, tickets and complaints, 210 tickets, 16 parking violations, 194 moving violations, three DWIs, 10 criminal complaints, six local ordinance violations, zero health tickets issued, 31 zoning issued. For October 25 court, they had three court sessions, one in person, two virtual, 220 defendants, 264 cases deposed of this month, 16 DWIs deposed. The total monies was $33,265.98. Boroughs is 16, 129.50, and the backlog has been going down, it's gone over, down a couple hundred cases. 904, it was like around 1,100 when it first started. So, I, they're doing extra nights, at least one a month, correct, chief? Court, yeah. So, hopefully that helps and they can get caught back up, because that's been the big thing. Okay, the final thing is that I have our illustrious police department. Thank God the chief's here if I have any questions. Calls to service, 1,691, 14 adult arrests, two DWIs, 209 summonses, 43 radar, 40 motor vehicle crashes. For the National Incident Base Reporting System, there were 14 crimes and seven of those were cleared during that month, which is 50%, which is really good. Because I follow that online, the whole statistics for the country, it's very interesting to go through that and see what, what is cleared. If I can find the detectives, I thought I had the page folded. Sorry about that. Okay. And they make it tiny again. Don't they know how old I am? Okay, they're working on, there was a weapons offense, possession of heroin, there was three burglary, burglary trespassings, three thefts, violation of court order contempt, three of those, missing person, death investigations, and they're doing background firearms permitting, there was 28 background checks. I know they're on social media doing, checking stuff, so the detectives are behind the scenes, constantly working on these cases. Some of this stuff is years old, and they're, I know they don't give up on them. And I know they were doing, did your food drive for replenish? I didn't get the report on what you guys. Usually by this time, I get the poundage, and it's something crazy, so hopefully it was another really successful year for you guys. Okay. Yep. That's basically all I have. I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. You know, but I just couldn't get over, I saw today the pizza. It was great.
Word of Health, vaccination vouchers are expected to start early next year, so everyone can send out to Raiders Clinic, they'll be able to achieve their own time, and somebody set up a vet of their choice. Word of Health is closing out the first year, I work in Somerset County, just want to say it's still been great, everybody on the board is still happy that we have made that move, so that's been very beneficial. Word of Health meetings, 33rd day of the month in the community room, six J3 commissions, we, we had no meeting this month, so I don't know if we have any changes for that, maybe the second, third day of the month in this room, that's it again. Zoning, no major changes, but they did want to put out a reminder that if you have a rental unit, then you do have to register for that, and that's yearly. The new Planet Fitness is covering along well in Middlesex Crossing. The owners reached out to us, and we're looking forward to having that as part of the community. Dunkin' Donuts at the end of town, remodeled recently, and it looks great. They've been, you know, really neat that things up over there, it was, it wasn't the best for a while, but they did a nice job including the property and sign. So, that's good. I was also one of the ones that went to the League of Municipalities, and it definitely was a good experience going down there, I learned a lot of useful info. Also, you know, was very just being able to represent Borough at the event. I also was able to meet the new member Hoffman, and it sounds like they're going to be great additions to the town. It's nice to have, you know, a reasonable size company moving in again. Lastly, congratulations again to Quinn and Clock on their election to council, looking forward to working with them next year. Hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment about the code enforcer. From what I've heard from the court, they're actually starting to process the tickets he's writing, and I guess he's not making friends, which is a good thing. You know, I hate to put it that way, but you gotta, you gotta be careful, because I was told by somebody that was handed a ticket, he was called by his neighbor, and then he turned around and wrote the person that called violations. So, be careful what you wish for with him, because he's not playing favorites with anybody. And that's what we actually asked him to do when we hired him, I noticed council did, to enforce our codes, and I just wanted to make that.
No, that's good.
Forgot to mention after the court, because I was told his cases are starting to come in, and he's actually there, and, you know, it's working.
Which is good. Actually, that was one of the items that was on our, on, that came out at the town hall last year.
Yes.
And it's one of the things that we were able to act on.
I know he works with police and DPW both, because I've gotten emails about it, and he's been fantastic.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, before we go to the administrators, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish off with a little quick public service announcement, because the weather is starting to get cold, and every year I get a ton of calls, I didn't know, nobody told me, you gotta get the cars off the street, or you're gonna get a ticket. That's as simple as it goes. I mean, pay attention, you're now duly warned, because every year someone tells me, and it's always the people that have been in town for 30 years that are telling me, we never had that happen before, and I can guarantee you that the police department on the, especially the first couple of snows for the year, and I know I'm not speaking out of turn here, chief, you guys are out there to, to, to make sure that they're, they're following the rules. So, now they know.
What about our, sorry, what about the seniors? I know we got a few calls last year where we had disabled seniors that weren't able to get them out there, nor knew who to really call. Is there anything that we can, your administration can do to help them just call?
Call here, senior services, or actually, senior service is the best way to go, or if you're having a real, if a genuine issue, call the police department, and I can't guarantee they'll be able to help them or whatever, but at the, at the end, they're going to make sure they're safe.
We would just ask that everybody plan ahead. It's one of the notes I wanted to bring up from my report. The other side is that neighbors, we should just be looking out for one another. If you have elderly neighbors, reach out, I have elderly neighbors, I help them out, remind them, help them. If it's not just the car on the snow-covered street, it could be their garbage, their recycling, it's just a good thing to kind of start looking out for one another, especially during the winter months when the elderly are inside more than they're outside.
Okay, chief?
I have a couple of things I just want to report on for the administrators' report. Lenny's gonna assist me with them. I want to start with Daisy Park, the Army Corps of Engineers. Daisy Park was Andre Avenue, block 278, block 60 and 62. It was sold to the Army Corps Real Estate Division. Remaining balance owed for that park property is approximately $19,700 from the partial payments, partial payments that were made. At the same time, they purchased the lot next door from the Borough, it was lot 278, I'm sorry, block 278, lot 52 for $231,000. There have been delays in receiving final payment, we were hoping to get that in 2025. Apparently, the Army Corps pays DEP, and then DEP has to pay the Borough. So, there's a little bit of red tape involved in, in collection. So, Lenny's been actively following up, because we're hoping to receive payment before the end of the year, I think it would be helpful.
Sure.
Mountain View Park update, Len, you want to give a Mountain View Park update on the bathrooms and the park playground?
Yeah, I know, obviously, I'm not going to be sitting on top of a lot of material that was, so we as a Borough were responsible for the top lot materials, and that material that was part of the, the branch and all that project that's done, so we removed all that material out of there, that's why we had to put the J out, put the roof clean. The fence was also repaired, too, involved in the interior of that fence, it is not good in place, that fence, but some of the areas, I think we had to be concerned with the fence, the common and top lot. with, bring fence upon and on that. But um, it looks normal. Um, the back, uh, it's a lot. Uh, Larry's here, Larry's here, he knows my struggle with it too as well. Um, there's a work order, we're waiting for PSC and G to shut off the house in one month. So that crane company, income plays a factor over the amount of money and we're still waiting. And it's falling on PSC and G right now, uh, between Larry and Bernie and myself, we have been following up. Uh, we, we, every other day, so um, we're really trying to stay on top of it, because I was trying to push this thing to get done by the Winter Wonderland and that's good. We've already informed her, so she's got to go with the chance. So go ahead, Chief.
The uh, Nexus Winter Wonderland, uh, obviously we said already, but it's maybe December 7th from 2:30 to 5:30. The mission is free, that's important to know. We ask the public to join us there for the tree lighting, food trucks, vendors, bonfire, performances by local groups, music and a visit by Santa and Mrs Claus. As far as the holiday decorations, I know it was touched on, but I think it's important to point out that that new streetscape project from Fourth Street to Washington Ave really cleaned up that area and it really looks nice, um, all decorated. Uh, the DPW's still in the process of cleaning up uh, properties, the borough properties, but uh, they've also managed to start decorating or in process of Borough Hall, the Police Department, Victor Cole Park and Mountain View Park. So things should really look um, wonderful for uh, the holiday season. We did have our crafting connections, the police department, uh, with our community. Uh, you know, focused towards our senior citizens. It was the 14th, we had about 60 people that showed and we did that along with the um, senior services. So we had, uh, had lunch, made crafts and discuss, discuss concerns with our seniors. Um, it was just a nice day, it was a nice afternoon. I appreciate you coming there and Lenny, um, for uh, for coming and spending a few minutes with, with everybody. It was a really nice afternoon. On November 14th, Lenny and I met with Bound Brook Administrator Jasmine McCoy, their police chief, Jason Giannato, EMS director, Mike Lopotowski, started dialogue and we were exploring different shared services opportunities for the future. In some cases, um, it might be a smart way to streamline some operations, uh, and control our long-term costs. We want to investigate ways to follow, allow us, municipality to consolidate resources and improve each other's delivery of services. So um, yeah, we just wanted to kind of open the, open the door and have some dialogue. We're, our intention is to meet with our neighbors and Don Ellen and, and surrounding towns, so we might be able to find some other ways. We do have um, a shared service with, with Don Ellen at this point. Um, and just to touch on the league, and I know everyone kind of, kind of touched on it, Claire, congratulations, that was a wonderful luncheon, it was nice to be there. It was very crowded Middlesex and I was happy to be there, uh, standing with you, celebrating. But uh, you know, some of the, the work that gets done at the league was, was the, the other side of it, right? The business side. And so um, we have the jetback truck, we spent about $422,000 for that we shared with Don Ellen um, as a shared service, um, so both towns get to use it. It's a brand new truck, we received delivery beginning of the year and it had some warranty issues, um, some repairs that needed to be made and we couldn't use it. So it got sent back and, and Lenny was told virtually it was gonna take months to return. He made a plan with Parsa to help, as a stopgap, to make sure we had sewer emergency. Um, but you know, he spent a few minutes, we spent a few minutes with the owner of the, of jetback and uh, before Lenny left, we managed to have him turn that, that repair. So we should be getting that truck back much, much sooner and that's important, especially with flooding or other issues in town with the sewers, which is a, which is a regular uh, issue or problem. GIS mapping, storm drains and outfalls. If I miss anything, Lenny, please let me know, but uh, on the 17th, uh, Lenny met with Colliers, uh, engineering regarding GIS mapping for all our storm drains and outfalls. But before the end of 2026, the DEP is requiring the geographic information systems. It's a, it's a way to visualize and analyze data on a map by layering different types of geographic information. Uh, we recently processed a purchase order for $120,000 for the cost of the mapping. It should be completed before 2026, correct?
You're right.
I think that's it. December 3rd, 7 and, between 7 PM and 9 PM is our town hall meeting. Uh, I wanna congratulate Bill Winkman on receiving the color, he was building really nice tonight and uh, as far as the snow covered streets, uh, with, with the weather coming, um, it's important to make sure that the roads are passable, that they can be cleaned, that we can get emergency vehicles up and down and that's the main reason why we make sure we enforce that. We wanna make sure that we can get emergency services where they can go um, when the, when the snows fall.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Um, moving down, let's uh, go to the privilege of the floor. Uh, I'd like a motion to open.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
All right, anyone wishing to, to say anything, step on up. Oh, the mic's on that side.
Yeah, they moved it. That's cause the camera.
So we can get them on camera.
Hmm? They're on camera that way.
How you doing, guys? Mike Schneider, 440 High Street, Middlesex, New Jersey. And mayor and council also know that I'm with the uh, uh, town's environmental commission as vice chair. Uh, I've lived in town for about 40 years and uh, brought up two boys who moved out of town, but they're, they're doing very well. Um, Claire has done a fantastic job uh, over the past two years and uh, one thing I wanna mention is that volunteerism is very fragile sometimes and um, for her to receive this award, I think means, means a, a lot to her and, and the commission. But uh, as you know, Claire goes around, we go around, I, I go around when I can, just to see what the environmental, if there's any environmental issues with the, within our community, cause we wanna address those as soon as possible. And uh, one of my little ventures with my dogs, they wanted to go for a ride, so I appeased them. I went down what I call the uh, um, South Lincoln Boulevard extension, you know, where the curve goes around, but you go straight, nobody goes down there because there's only a few residents who live down there, plus a few businesses. And uh, the devastation, devastation I saw was unbelievable. Um, Army Corps of Engineers probably clear cut at least 30 acres of land. Um, we didn't see this on the mapping, we just saw a uh, um, a pump station and this is a wetland. Totally destroyed a whole ecosystem. It's so disheartening and I think what we need to do is to get them to, impose on them to get some type of plans for any type of uh, replanting, um, restoration. Uh, there was no need, if this is supposed to be a retention basin, I mean, it was clear cut. Has anybody been up there?
I saw the pictures that you, you.
I, I put them on. Yeah, I haven't seen anything like that since I used to be up, I, I was in Washington State and they don't even clear cut like that lumber anymore. It looked like they're gonna put it in an Amazon uh, how, uh, warehouse. The amount of property that they, that was devastated there is unbelievable. They're not only took it out, took out all those trees, they also took out all the roots. The um, Army Corps of Engineer made up their master plan about 50 years ago. It's antiquated, it has to be fixed. They've changed it as we've gone along, but now they're in our town and as they went from Bound Brook up, we're getting to more pieces of property, putting up walls and, and uh, different burms, burming areas. My understanding is that this is a, a water retention basin, but I'm talking, this isn't a little thing like behind the, the chicken place or in front of the chicken place. This is acres and acres of property, just clear cut it. Um, Claire can tell you the importance of the trees. I mean, I'm not really a tree hugger, but when I see something like this, it's happening in our town, we have to address it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claire L'Vorn, 809 Grandview. It's, I just have questions about um, negotiating. So for C2 and H contract for the Army Corps, I don't know who negotiated, but why there's no trees being planted on that, for that. So this was probably negotiated in 2023? Who does the negotiations?
So Claire, I just wanna touch with you, um, so I'm in a lot of these meetings. I am in the process for any future projects for them to reimburse the borough for any payments, FYI. Um, there really is no negotiation with the borough. They get all their approvals from DDP, right? So all those, so the levy, there is a ton of retention pond, I've seen them, very similar to, especially when it comes to retention ponds, not, I get Mike's concerns, but if you take a look at like options, options, see what that is?
Yes, yes.
Right? That whole development, what's behind you?
We have the retention pond.
Is there any trees in that retention pond?
No, there won't be. But, but if you're breaking up that property, each, each one of us should have two trees in our front yard.
You are correct, but when they come into their project and that levy system that is going along, that's why they write everything out to, so, so the detention pond is, once they do their range and everything, yes, they'll be good to go, but they're willing to give the borough back money for planning, 100%.
Okay.
So I'm working on that now, because I didn't go out there to take that all.
Right. So I, I go to all these meetings and there's nothing about retention ponds in there at all.
And I've seen it, um, you know, once they took it down, which is where my concern was defensively, um, that the chief had talked about too as well on the last meeting, but because all of this area is gonna be wide open, right? They're not allowing planting once the levy's up. So there's a lot of guidelines and, and they're not even completely, Claire, so they still have to put a mountain park after this next phase, but I'm working on hopefully getting some sort of funding back to the borough to be able to plant any shady tree commission environments or something.
We're running out of places to plant stuff.
Correct, but to my understanding, when the Army Corps does this project, it is a federal project, they purchase the credits from um, DEP and they spend millions of dollars to be able to cut down all the shady.
Yes, and they're being remediated in Bridgewater. So we're not, Middlesex Borough is not getting the benefit of clean air.
So it'll go somewhere else.
Yes.
Yes, that was my understanding, but in the future, I would like to get some sort of funding back so we can replant elsewhere.
So when are negotiations gonna happen for the phased by Mountain View Park soccer fields?
Though, once this project is complete, I'll let you know, but yeah, they've already begun this next phase.
Cause I'm getting a lot of questions at meetings and like, I, I feel like I, I attend everything and I'm not.
Honestly, we haven't even talked about that. There were three different layouts that were talked about on where it was gonna go, what they were gonna give the borough back, since I have some stuff, right? And what the borough can get back in return, kind of sort of. Um, so, once this project is towards the end, then yes, we'll, we'll get there. I'll keep you in the mix if you'd like.
Yes.
I'll bring you in.
Yeah.
Um, into that meeting, now that I've brought that in. So yeah, I have a meeting within the next two weeks.
Okay.
Two weeks, every Monday in two weeks, if that's based on my idea. So they are willing to answer.
And retention ponds can have more than turf grass in there. So there's Chris Obraptor from Rutgers has been converting in Hillsborough, a lot of their retention ponds and putting in native plants.
I, I'm not an engineer.
Okay.
Well, I know. Usually when they come in and do a retention pond.
Right.
There's no trees whatsoever. They come in and do all their range and then, which is why there's no trees in the nature pond.
Right.
So we can say native plants? Sorry, I mean, what do you mean by native plants? If they can't put a tree or got, like shrubs?
They're, they're mostly like grasses and flowers that have longer roots that can absorb and clean the water.
Like poplinus grass, that type of thing?
No, that's not native, but like uh, that's invasive actually, so that's why. Uh, it could be like a little blue stem is a grass, planted outside by the library, it has very long roots, absorbs the water, cleans the water as it slowly filtrates into the ground.
Okay.
So there's, it's turf grass, turf grass, it, that's that deep. Native plant roots are like foot, feet deep.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm also just wondering, so like by the, so was there a negotiation? Cause I overheard something when they're taking out the trees by Mountain View Park that we're getting an extra soccer field?
You're right.
So like, how, how is the public being notified of this kind of?
We're not, it's not finalized yet.
Okay.
Nothing's finalized.
All right.
There's three layouts right now for Mountain View, right? So there's nothing filed over Mountain View, whatsoever.
Very good.
They wanted to have it next to the building, so.
Okay. No, I just, I just think, I just think because like where they're doing the work now, most of the town is not aware of what's going on, but once they start working at Mountain View Park, there's gonna be.
Everyone will know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's why we'll, 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 we'll commission.
And I go to all the meetings, but the next one's on the same as town hall, so. All right. Thank you.
Is this information disseminated through the park improvement committee at all for like the Mountain View subcommittees? Like, I don't know, would that be helpful beneficial as well?
I don't think we have much say, do we have much say?
No, just information. I mean, like if there's information to be passed, there's information to be passed.
Are they, were they giving you written information or not much really?
Not until they make decisions.
Not until they're done. Till you get the final.
Right.
And then this is what's gonna happen, okay. But.
So you could pass a long good out.
Mr. Polikovich.
Dave Polikovich, 240 Hazelwood. Um, I just wanted to follow up on what was just asked about by the environmental commission members. So the borough, you know, I was over there the other day. You have to see it to believe it. Did the, nobody from the borough, they, the, the, the Army Corps just went to DEP and just said, we're gonna do this and nobody from the borough knew about this?
Where are they gonna take down trees? We don't know they're gonna take down trees all the way up to curb. They, you know, they have their plans and, and there's a ton of movements, but they didn't physically say, listen, we're taking down every single tree, right? So um, we knew because of the levy system, the levy system, some areas are 24,900, gradually rate down. So yeah, it's, it's all signed to the state, you know, DDP and everyone other side of it. So yeah, I knew some trees would come down.
But you didn't know the extent?
I didn't, you're right.
Okay. I, I just wanna make a suggestion because a, a couple of, of you have commented about, and, and not just tonight, I've heard it in the past, that the Greenbrook Flood Commission is not really uh, forthcoming all the time with uh, information. Um, and I know you guys all have our liaisons to different things and you're very busy with stuff, but some of the other towns that I've covered over the years, um, these external entities like the, the county's solid waste advisory committee or whatever, that meet like, you know, four times a year, three times a year, and it's tough for you guys to actually go to the meetings, but they've, they've often, you know, some of these other towns, twice a year, they'll have a list of all these entities on an agenda, like maybe February and August, like twice a year. And that will just prod whoever the liaison is to maybe check in with that entity in advance of the discussion and say, what's been going on? Because again, if they don't come to you with all this information, maybe a couple times a year, you guys have gotta go to them. And I, I know you guys are busy, you got a lot of things to do, but if you knew that it was gonna be on agenda, say February and, you know, August or whatever, two times a year, whoever was the liaison with that would know the month before, maybe I better check in, see what's going on over there. Cause I think the same thing came up a year ago with the Pond Avenue, when they were gonna put that paint recycling thing in. Everybody was like, wow, this, this came on us. They had to have discussed, discussed it at their meetings, at least in passing. So maybe we just didn't monitor it, you know, close enough. And again, I know you guys are monitoring dozens of things, but if you put it on the agenda twice a year, it's a little bit of a reminder to jog, you know, let's just go check in or go on the website or whatever. All right? Okay, thanks a lot.
Anything else? Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody stepping up, like a motion to close?
Motion, second.
Okay. Uh, before Kelsey goes rattling down the, the agenda resolution items, I just wanna let everyone know, there is gonna be, there is an agenda amendment to resolution 313-2025. It's gonna reflect the date change from 12/31/31 to 12/31/30, which was a typo. And uh, I appreciate Mr. Polikovich pointing that one out. I do appreciate the, the phone call on that. Uh, Kelsey, ready?
Resolution 309, 2025, authorizing the mayor to execute the community's solar municipalities service agreement with Solar Simplified. Resolution 310, 2025, a resolution creating and implementing a long, long range plan to assess drainage issues. Resolution 311, 2025, acceptance of standing reports. Resolution 312, 2025, authorizing the mayor to execute the renewal contract with GovPilot for the Clerks Department licensing software, effective January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2028. Resolution 313, 2025, authorizing the mayor to execute the employment agreement between the Borough of Middlesex and Chief of Police, Matthew Geist. Resolution 314, 2025, authorizing added tax lien for the cleanup costs incurred from violations of the property maintenance code for block 273, lot 20. Resolution 315, 2025, appointing Mayence Rosinos to be clerk effective November 26, 2025. Resolution 316, 2025, Governor's Council on Substance Use Disorder, Alliance to Prevent Substance Use Disorder. Resolution 317, 2025, 2025 sewer billing waived appeals for block 161, lot 5.01. Resolution 318, 2025, authorizing the sale of a 2015 Falcon asphalt trailer to the Borough of Manville in the amount of $5,000. Resolution 319, 2025, permitting the consumption of alcoholic beverages for the Winter Wonderland Festival to be held at Mountain View Park on Sunday, December 7th, 2025, between 2:30 PM and 6:30 PM. Resolution 32025, 2025, approving, approving the reimbursement of $45 to Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers for overpayment on a temporary board of health licenses. Resolution 321, 2025, approving change order one, decreasing the total amount of the contract for the 2024 NJ DOT State Aid Project, First Street, Second Street, and Seneca Ave by $3,120.54. Resolution 322, 2025, authorizing the purchase of a new fire apparatus for the Fire Department under Sourcewell Contract E1 11/30/21, RBG1 contract. Resolution 323, 2025, authorizing the transfer of funds for the 2025 operating budget and 2025 swim pool budget. Resolution 324, 2025, authorizing the treasurer to cancel all outstanding checks from the trust account dated prior to December 31, 2024, totaling $750.68. Resolution 325, 2025, special items of revenue and appropriation. Resolution 326, 2025, authorizing the release of developer ESCO inspection fees balance. Resolution 327, 2025, authorizing the treasurer to cancel all outstanding checks from the current operating account dated prior to December 31, 2024, totaling $8,195.72. Resolution 328, 2025, authorizing the treasurer to cancel all outstanding checks from the animal trust account dated prior to December 31, 2024, totaling $40. Resolution 329, 2025, authorizing the tech, the treasurer to cancel all outstanding checks from the payroll account dated prior to December 31, 2024, totaling $1,934.72. Never ends. Resolution 330, 2025, recording of a tax sales certificate. Resolution 331, 2025, authorizing the release of developer ESCO inspection fees balance. Resolution 332, 2025, reimbursement of late fee for a dog license in the amount of $10 to Jennifer Maeda due to duplicate license. Resolution 333, 2025, appointing EB Solutions LLC DBA as the difference card to provide HRA services for the Middlesex Borough for 2026. Resolution 334, 2025, authorizing the mayor to execute the annual account service agreement between EB Employee Solutions LLC and Middlesex Borough effective January 1, 2026. Resolution 335, 2025, authorizing a stipend of $5,000 for Sally Lynch of the Department of Public Works for additional duties related to administration. Resolution 336, 2025, authorizing a stipend of $5,000 to Robin Seif of the Middlesex Borough Police Department for, for additional duties related to administration. Resolution 337, 2025, authorizing the tax collector to issue a tax title lien redemption for block 13, lot 5.
Okay, does anyone need to pull any of these?
Five.
The, the, which resolution?
329, Joe.
329, the one for payroll checks? Yeah, okay, anyone else?
Chair, would you say the number?
Five, 313, the chief's contract.
313?
And you're 313, okay, these two? All right, um, I like a motion to approve everything except for those two?
Motion, second.
All right, any additional discussion?
The fire truck, that's for the crash truck, right, Caroline, okay, just making sure that was the one that they spec, okay. Figured you're here, you can answer that quick.
All right, call the roll, please.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DeSino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Okay, uh, let's go back to Resolution 313, 2025, I need a motion.
Motion, second.
Okay, uh, you wanted this pulled?
No, I just wanted to read a quick statement just to the constituents as the councilmen go fast for the preparation of it.
Sure.
You know, as a councilman, I prioritize transparency and honesty, and in this case, I honestly have not given a thorough consideration of all matters that affects our constituents involving this, this, um, contract. Unfortunately, I was not actively involved to the negotiation process for the contract, which is from an injury and for other reasons, I could not leave, could not attend, which leads me to abstain from this vote, but I, I do trust my colleagues, but my trust alone, and I appreciate their hard work and investigation, but reliance and their assessments, it's not enough for my voting power for my constituents, cause my absence during the discussions means I did not have the opportunity to ask critical questions and fully understand the implications of this contract, which is a huge contract. I believe that every decision should be made with an informed considerate for the taxpayers' interests, and without that, I've given, without me fully and honestly giving my full attention to it, I cannot in good conscience support it at this time in regards of making a yes or no vote, but I do highly respect and love our chief. His efforts have made us top 10 safety within our things and to take on even more for administrator truly shows that the investment, I believe, is worth it, but at this concept and from this role, from this perspective of the councilman, this is where I came for this decision.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Nope, call the roll, please.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Abstain.
Councilman DeSenza.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman DeSino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, chief. Uh, Resolution 329, uh, authorizing the treasurer to cancel outstanding checks from the payroll account dated prior to December 31, 2024, totaling 193407.
Just a question on that there.
Wait, I need a motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Caroline, if they're payroll, how do we not pay people?
We pay people and they never catch the checks, so the checks aren't good anymore, they're being so morbid.
Do we know who they are for?
We do, and we can try to get contact with them if they still work here.
That's, okay, I, I worry about payroll, yeah, about payroll, I, you know, it's the other, it's the other stuff.
There's only so many times you can ask, Carolyn, I get it, believe me. Okay, um, anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DeSino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Okay, uh, non-consent agenda?
Resolution 338, 2025, payroll claims.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yep.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman DeSino.
Yes.
Councilman Doty.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Okay, we do have an agenda workshop item tonight, e-bikes and e-scooters, um, at this point, uh, I'm not 100% sure who's gonna drive the discussion, is it you, chief?
I can. So you all have a copy of a sample, and this is just a draft, just something to consider, um, something to look at, I think, um, we, because of the popular, popularity of e-bikes and e-scooters, they're, they're popping up everywhere, and with the whole cooler weather now, it's probably a good time to start thinking about what we would wanna see this ordinance look like, again, this is a sample, it's a draft, um, it could, uh, we can, we can make some changes to it, um, if you have any input, uh, we, we've used several different towns, we've had, uh, put together the same thing. The most important part here to think about is how do we protect public safety, how do we define the rules of the road with, um, e-bikes and e-scooters, they fall into a regulatory gray area between a traditional motor vehicle and a bicycle, a traditional bicycle and motor vehicle, so, um, you know, we wanna manage our public spaces in a safe way, we wanna make sure that, um, you know, people are safe walking on sidewalks. Some of these bicycles are capable of reaching speeds, um, of, of, of over 28 miles an hour, which could be very dangerous if you're a senior citizen or a very young child, or just someone who's, you know, not paying attention, um, walking on a sidewalk, so, um, some of the stuff is gonna be important, I think, to, to move these vehicles off the sidewalk and out to the street, anybody who's under a certain age, and on a tricycle wouldn't fall under that category. But if you had some time to, to look at this, I can answer questions for you, but basically, this just puts something where, like, again, like I said before, there's, 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 there wasn't a lot of regulation from the state when these things came out, and they're getting, you know, holidays coming, I'm expecting more, uh, and more as, as time would fly, and some of them are moving pretty quick. We had to put, uh, information out to our police officers just so they were understood because of the, the gray area of speeds and, uh, and, and use some of the model ordinances from other towns who are having much bigger problems. Uh, I've gotten several complaints about people walking and enjoying our parks, and yes, some of these are recreational type vehicles, and, you know, we want people to use our parks, but the complaints I'm getting is that the, uh, the young folks or, or people out there using these higher speed electric bicycles are, um, traveling really closely, they're, they're, uh, pulling wheelies and driving down, uh, the center of our roads. We've had more than one occasion, it's been twice, where 50, 60, 70 young people wearing face coverings, um, are traveling down our roads, blocking every lane and traffic, and, uh, you know, there's, there's not a lot of, uh, you know, you can't get out and stop them, they're refusing to pull over, it's not just up, it's, it's been, it went from Bridgewater, it went from Bound Brook, it went from Middlesex, to now, all the way down to like Scotch. And so the, the investigations that were done to identify people after is a lot of work involved, and so I think we just need some, some regulations that are gonna have a little bit more pipe to them, um, so we can, uh, we can keep our, our streets on the side of the city.
Okay, I, I do have a question here, um, I, I guess it's not necessarily a question as much as a comment, uh, cause I, I, you know, Christmas is coming up and a lot of people are looking at this, but I think a lot of people, and I did not realize, and I just wanna make sure that this is true, if you're on an e-bike that goes greater than 28 miles an hour, it's, it's considered a motorcycle, isn't it?
It needs to be registered, insured, you need, you need licensing for it, so yes, they can.
Right, and, uh, so it needs to be registered, insured, and the whole nine yards, so someone thinking they're doing their kid a favor by getting them a e-bike, the best one out there that does 35 miles an hour, he may be setting himself up for quite a hefty fine, if, you know, if he, if he gets caught.
And some of them are low speed, you know, some of them are 20, you know, 20 miles an hour with, with an assist, and, and some of them are scooters that go very slow, but some of the stuff we've seen has gone very quick.
There's been a few quick ones that I've seen go buzzing down, uh, Beechwood for sure.
Part of that was educating our police officers when this came out, but the state was promoting the use of, of electric vehicles and as an alternate, uh.
Sure.
Mode of transportation, so, um, it's kind of two forces kind of pushing against one another, but there wasn't a lot of regulatory.
In, in your ideal world, what are you looking for the council to do?
I, I'd like to, to review this, I, I thought it'd be nice to have a discussion about it, and, and maybe if you wanna provide feedback, um, we put some important points in here, some of the things about, um, borough and parks, um, other places have done that, we put in here that they, they should not be permitted in parks, and, and again, you know, that, it's how the, um, what the council sees most fitting, um, we can give you our recommendations, but it's gonna be, um, you know, yours to decide. As far as, you know, the most important here is that no person can drive in a reckless or careless manner, there's a woman who contacted me and said she was walking through Victoria Gold Park and the kids were, were literally like, were trying to do wheelies towards her as close as they can, and then when she told them to knock it off, they were, um, less than respectful, um, towards her, so, you know, and she, she called us, and those are case by case.
It's, it's been the Wild West back there, it's behind my house, and I've gone out there and they're like, going insane, and they come around onto Osceola, across Melrose and that, they never even slow down at the stop streets, one of them is literally gonna get flattened.
I don't think it's, it's the, the scooter itself, it's just what you're doing with.
Yes.
Or a problem.
Yeah, and, you know, I've walked down Willow and they're coming down there doing wheelies and crap, and it's, it's getting out of control.
Specifically prohibited operations, pro, prohibitions that we put here, and that's what I just asked that you look and review, and, um, we can continue this, this conversation as we move forward and kind of, this could be a live document until we decide to put it in play, but I think it's important to get something.
All right, good, uh, actually, I was gonna make a comment too, but go ahead, Joe.
I see one thing that's missing, and that's the golf carts. We don't see many of them in this town in Middlesex, but I notice down the shore, and they're allowed wherever they're, I, that's, yeah, South Plainfield has it, but not in, in, uh.
Middlesex.
In this proposal. You don't have anything about the, the electric golf carts.
I think they're seen as a low-speed vehicle, and that is, there's a section.
I meant, maybe, maybe I missed scooter, tricycle.
LSP is.
That's an LSP.
No, that's not, that's South Plainfield.
Yeah.
That's South Plainfield.
Yeah, but that's what they're modeling it off.
Yeah, but it's not in the, in this one.
But you know what?
Oh, I'm tracking, it's just a.
Yeah, this is just a start, this is for us to.
Just a start, so, I could see that, you know, you can use them wherever it's under 35 miles an hour, I could see some people, especially some seniors might wanna take it down to pick up, you know, on Lincoln Boulevard or something, uh, to the supermarket. The other thing, I noticed in South Plainfield's ordinance that I really liked, I think it was in South Plainfield anyway, one of the ordinance, that if you get a second or third violation, we confiscate the bike.
Okay, I like that too, Joe.
The other, we, we saw a couple of weeks ago, going down 28, kid on, on, on a motorized bike, had to be doing 40 miles an hour, standing up on his seat, one foot on the seat and one foot on the, on the handlebar.
Yeah.
Going like this, down 28, had to be doing 40 miles an hour.
That's impressive but terrifying, we apply.
Well.
No helmet.
We've had accidents with, um, juveniles that we've addressed, um, we've issued multiple summonses to, um, to, to some who are adults and juveniles who are driving radically dangerously recklessly, um, golf carts are not permitted on our streets, so, um, we can put that in here specifically.
Well, you see, South Plainfield has it immense, and, and I know they're, they're allowed on, on any, wherever the speed limit is under 30 or 35 or less, they're allowed by state.
I don't know if that's a golf cart, that's another vehicle.
No, yeah, look, look on the, look at the, uh, South Plainfield, they have a picture of it and everything.
Cause they are definitely one on the streets.
You, you planning on buying a golf cart, Joe, is that what this is all about?
Lower cost.
If we could put in a pitch and putt maybe, and, Lenny, can we do that in the dump?
But, uh, ju- just so you know, I mean, it's a, it's a much larger park, Warren Echo Park, they got a big sign there, forget it, not, no, no, no e-bikes, no, no nothing.
One, one other comment, just, um, item D, at, uh, no, low-speed electric scooter, any other private property within the borough, being used for an event sponsored by the borough. Just thinking out of the box, there, there could be a parade that, you know, the kids wanna do something and it would be all together, I, I don't know that that's.
Oh, you know what?
If it's under control, if it's part of a, 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 a borough parade.
Like a Warren Day Parade.
Or, you know, the Little League Parade or something like that, and you had a bunch of these kids that would, within reason, doing 10 miles an hour, you know, as part of the parade, I wouldn't wanna limit that, if, if.
So we can put something with permission, but, but there are concerns if, if there are other children who are not involved, and there's motor vehicles and there's.
If they go and, you know, I mean, it would have to be controlled at 10 miles an hour, five miles, you know, but I could see them participating in something like the Little League Parade.
Well, yeah, at this, at this point, what I would say is that everyone take a, take a read of the material that you have and send your suggestions, uh, to the administrator and let's go from there.
Um, there, has everybody, cause I, I've read this a couple times, has everybody read the proposal, not South Plainfield, but what's come. Where the G R. Yeah, so I, I think it's got 95%, there's a couple things that Joe brought up, I agree with, I, I think, you know, I think, I, I think we can move forward, what I'm asking is, asking Chris, if we have consensus, to ask Chris to create the ordinance.
Yeah, I'd take a look, I, I can try that.
Cause it's not in ordinance form, Chris, right now?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it, unfortunately, it's not in my packet, uh, for whatever reason, uh, so I haven't even reviewed it, but I intend to review it and will, um, gladly, uh, give feedback.
Yeah, cause it's got everything there, Chris can look at it, maybe we can, we can introduce it in December.
All right, well, let's just stop.
Yeah.
Consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, all right, there you go.
Can it, can we make a quick, cause I know we've.
We can add stuff.
I mean, um, about routes, cause I know some residents have like sent information about designating like ways or Google map routes or something like that, that these kids can use or whatever, but a lo- a long time ago, we did talk about the very long process overhaul of Union, bringing it back down to two lanes in certain areas, cause we're only, Middlesex is only like that. If we can get an EV lane, biking lane, pedestrian lane, I know it's a huge undertaking, we've talked about it since Marcia's been here, and it's been, but if we got started now, I think we would be ahead of this EV issue, we can even possibly set a model of how it can incorporate within. can incorporate within modern transportation, that's going to happen, I know it's money, so we always talked about it being money, but somebody's going to get hit, like, like we're just on the foot trail, going near Hazelwood, one of them almost took out Ziki, Ziki ran across the field, that's my little four-year-old, bikes come in, he doesn't see it, he almost gets clipped, and I'm like, how the, the bike, right, like, common sense, you're going to deal with kids being kids at all points, but on the serious part, being in a road where a senior officer chased those bikes, blaring a horn like sixty, seventy cops going down Union, what would that look like, is that possible? I know that's a hard, more detailed conversation, but I think it would be safe, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with you, that's a DOT thing, chief.
A big question for, it's a DOT thing, it's an engineer, we have to do a study applied to DOT, but there's.
Well, either that, but there's a lot of these E-studies that if you're willing to look at, consider electronic vehicles or of some type, that maybe we can get them to fund it, we'll see, I mean, listen, we don't, if you don't ask, you don't get, so let's see where we go. Yeah. Okay, anything else on this agenda workshop item? Okay, let's, let's move on, I'd like to have a motion to open for the privilege of the floor on the agenda workshop item.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone want to step up? Don't forget your name and address.
Vincent Pileggi, six oh eight Clinton Ave, quickly touch on your point, Joe, I've done a lot of research on low-speed vehicles, I, I don't, I entertained by a golf cart once, right now, there's nothing, nothing in the books, and Middlesex-wise, it would have to only be on twenty-five mile an hour residential, plenty twenty-five mile an hour street, the council would have to pass something to allow them on thirty-five mile an hour streets. To touch on the e-bikes, e-bikes in parks is already on the books, the parks ordinance already prohibits any bikes, motor vehicles, literally anything besides like a baby carriage from being on the parks, I don't know if that's, I haven't seen the sample ordinance, but working with Melissa, working with Rec, I've kicked kids off, like whipping down, I've, I've seen some of these bikes, they're really impressive, they go like forty miles an hour, I'm like, I don't know, I mean, Jeremiah, you might have seen it, I had, I had to kick the kid, I don't know, might have been focused, it might have been later in the day, so you weren't there, but they're not allowed in the parks, I don't know if it's in, is it in the ordinance?
Yes, the proposed?
Yes, I don't know if that's redundant, and is there, is there an age in the ordinance? Like a minimum age?
No. As far as, as far as.
Yeah.
There's a, it specifies if you're under seventeen, and on a tricycle, you can be on a sidewalk, but if you're over, you can't.
All right, so the only reason I, I comment on that is because a lot, I've seen a lot of other ordinances in other towns, go almost too far on it, you can get a moped license in the state of New Jersey at fifteen, I think fifteen is more of a reasonable age that aligns with the, I mean, would you rather have a kid not have a, an e-bike, but then go on a high-powered moped with a state license, I mean, it's just something you could consider in it, I think that's all my points, Joe, if you want to split the cost on a go-kart, I'll split it with you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, there you go.
Claire LeVorn, eight oh nine Grandview, this is the second time I've heard of, I guess it was the previous Borough Minister had brought up dropping twenty-eight down to two lanes, and actually, there is no safe way to get a bicycle from one side of town to the other, like, I have to ride on the sidewalk, so, I think we'll get a, a good taste of that when the Army Corps does shut that road down to two lanes to do their, their, you know, the wall, that might be a good time to reconsider dropping it down and leaving it that way.
Thank you.
Get it!
I said that out loud.
There you go, one lever, Jack.
Bruce Sanders, ten Venice Avenue, a couple points, first thing, your hat looked like you were getting ready to go, Mr. Carnes, to, on your go-kart, I was, I figured it's parked outside, you're ready to go. Second thing, is the state of New Jersey have any guidelines on e-bikes yet somewhere that we can utilize, have we dug into the state on e-bikes? I just wondered, that's a thought.
They just classify them, right, that's the only thing, Matt?
They regulate, they tell you the sizes, how big, some of the.
I guess they just define them by category.
Define them by class, that's it.
Yeah, I would think it would be.
Not saying.
No, or these rules, the other thing I was thinking of, like the KISS method, keep it simple, stupid, abide by the laws of the road.
That's it.
That's it. The only other caveat that I would have on that, especially when these bikes can go thirty mile an hour and you're a driver, you don't expect a bike to come across your path, lighting, and I don't know if you can make that a regulation for, especially if you're on a road like twenty-eight, if it's a back road, you're looking for kids, but you're on twenty-eight, two-lane, you're not going to think of an e-bike, especially if they're darting out or anything like that, so, you might catch a light, you know, and I don't know, that's just a thought, but I would say, if you're not abiding by the rules of the road, you get pulled over, and you get a ticket, just like anybody else would do, those e-bikes should not be on a sidewalk at all, that should be number one in the ordinance.
Well, this will, this will help us, Bruce.
Yeah.
Provide the teeth when someone is.
Yeah, I know, he has nothing.
The bigger problem right now is even, Matt said it, the parks.
Yeah.
We've had multiple complaints, multiple, carrying through the park, almost like a dirtbag.
Okay, but one point on that, I could see them coming up the road on, any roads in the park, they should be allowed to ride, abiding by the fifteen mile an hour speed limit kind of thing, but any kind of walkway, Victor Crawl has that walkway, they should not be allowed, that should be ground zero.
That's what he proposed.
Yeah.
But right now, they're, they're on the walkways, they're going through the soccer field, they're going through the, all the soccer fields, they're on the tennis courts.
Yeah.
Really?
Right, because they feel, they feel it's just like a regular bike, that they can go anywhere, and it's just, and, and the, the real problem with them is that they, they don't have a, they have a tendency to ride very close to the parked cars, so if you're in a car pulling out, you almost can't see them until you move far enough out that they're going to run into your door.
Also down at the docks of Victor Crawl, Lenny, I think you had to clean this up, but they were doing burnouts on the docks, and you could see they were power washing down there, there's, they're covered in black streets.
Yeah, I provided chief with that guy riding on the handlebars at twenty-eight, so, the point is, is they're not abiding by, it's the KISS, if they're not abiding by the rules of the road, ticket.
Well, and I agree, because, you know, it's unfortunate, but it's all fun and games until it isn't fun and games, and that's what's, that's what's going to happen.
Somebody's going to get.
Okay, anyone else?
If they catch them.
Yeah, but they're not considered motor vehicles.
Someone, if they're over twenty-eight miles an hour, they are.
Like the smaller ones are?
Yeah, the little ones, no. All right, any other, any other things on this? Okay, motion to close?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an executive session tonight, we're going over a few things, action probably not, right?
Not, I might agree.
Okay, there will be no action taken, our next regular meeting is December sixteenth, there is a town hall next week on the third, take a suit of resolution, please.
Resolution three thirty-nine twenty twenty-five, executive session.
All right, can I have a motion?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Council President Conahan.
Yes.
Councilman Carnes.
Yes.
Councilman DeSenza.
Yes.
Councilman Doherty.
Yes.
Councilman Greigs.
Okay, guys, two minutes, and we're going to kick this in gear, because we've got a few items on here, everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving. See you later, Vincent.